Thank you for coming to beautiful Pine Street. Please stand with my allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, check two thirty-one, public laws in nineteen seventy-five, this meeting has been duly advertised against our press issue of January eighteenth, two thousand thirteen. All municipal clerks of townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of posting a notice of seven men. Okay, Mr. Boyd. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazick?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, we've, uh, publication on final board office. Report superintendent's request.
Okay, so we're gonna open up this evening. We have a few presentations on the docket. I'll, I'll call up the Spooktacular Committee members in a folk, in a moment, but, um, I'd just like to open the meeting by saying for the, for, for folks who don't know, um, Spooktacular, and I don't wanna steal any thunder, but it's a terrific, uh, district-wide event, where our students, uh, paint the shop windows in Freehold Borough. Uh, and I, I don't, I'm not gonna steal the thunder, but it, it's, it's one of the best events that the Freehold Regional High School District does, so I'd like to call up, Ms. Judy Guy, Ms. Barbara Kane, and Cheryl Mott.
We also have a special guest tonight. I'd like to call up Mr. Michael Federici, who's gonna help us with the presentations.
Who's Mike?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting us this evening. We appreciate being here. Before we've been, we begin with the Window Painting Awards, I'd like to give you just a brief overview of what we all do for the town for the month of October for the Halloween events. Our committee is all volunteer. We kick off the season by putting cornstalks and bows lining the streets of Main Street, the downtown district. Um, next, this past weekend, we had our haunted hayrides out at Lake Tapanimus Park, which is also known as the pond for some old timers that are here. We had about a thousand people riding on tractor-driven, excuse me, tractor-pulled hay wagons, doing scary skits, zombies walking out of the woods. It's, it's the perfect setting for a haunted hayride. This coming Saturday, we have our Jack-o'-lantern contest. That's Saturday night, October twenty-sixth. That's downtown at the Hall of Records. Kids from two to eighty-two carve their pumpkins, put a candle in it, we set them on the steps of the Hall of Records, and it's really a sight to see all the, all the creativity, from the little ones all the way up to the older, and they really get into competition for the, for the trophies and the prizes. And new this year, we're gonna have a trunk or treat. Several of the PTO moms in the borough have offered to decorate the trunks of their cars in a Halloween motif and hand out candy to all the kids that'll be attending. So that's something new. And we'll have our traditional mommy contest with the kids wrapped in toilet paper, competing for prizes again, so that's a lot of fun, too. On Sunday, we have our annual costume parade, which is, um, children and adults again in costume floats. And one of the most important things in any, any parade is music. And all six regional district schools come out with their bands. Um, no, no parade is complete without the music, and they come out in force, they even come out in costume, so that's another great event. People have said that our Halloween parade rivals Memorial Day Parade, and it's in large part because of the music, and we thank you for, for getting them out for us. We really appreciate that. Okay, uh, we partner with quite a few sponsors in addition to the regional, uh, and offer these free, they're all free events, and, uh, we wouldn't have any success without all their support and cooperation and enthusiasm. I'd like to personally thank Mr. Charles Sampson, Mr. J. Robinson, and Annette Piazza, not for their, only for their ongoing support, but for joining us last Tuesday when the kids were actually downtown painting. Special thanks to Annette, who works closely with us to get the information out to the teachers and the students, and she's an invaluable member of our team. She's an excellent ambassador for the, for the regional, and, uh, as a committee, we've decided she can never retire because she's just so important to us. It was a great day. It was picture-perfect, sunny skies, and, and we hope you all enjoyed it as much as we did. And if I could just sidetrack one more before we get into the actual presentations. I believe we have a picture of Mr. Sampson demonstrating exactly how much he enjoyed the day. Needed extra help with delivering your pizzas.
Aw, that cute. Great.
You gave us a hand. Well, thank you. Thank you.
My mom will be proud.
Okay. See where I lost my place there? Okay. Now, the reason we're here tonight is the annual window painting contest. Cheryl Mott and Barbara Kane have been involved in this for fifteen years. Cheryl is probably one of the hardest-working members on our committee. She knocks on all the doors of the merchants downtown to get permission slips. Without those, we wouldn't have any windows to paint on, so I thank Cheryl for that. Barbara tried to retire last year. As you can see, that didn't happen. She loves working with the regional, and she loves the kids, especially Window Painting Day, and we pulled her back out to help us for one more year. And Mike Federici, who thinks he's here tonight to help us prevent, present trophies, but in reality, we're here to recognize him also. Bruce Springsteen may have put Freel on the map, but Federici's runs a close second. Anyone that's familiar with the area knows their pies are outstanding, um, and they've been around a lot longer than the boss also. For several years, Mike and his family have generously donated their infamous pies for our students, teachers, and our committee. This past Tuesday, is that Tuesday? They donated over eighty pies to feed all the kids, so, which the kids still look forward to, so I, I thank you for that. And I believe Barbara has something?
We'd like to present this plaque to Mike, um, presented to Federici's Pizzeria, and in deep appreciation of your support and continued generosity, Halloween Spooktacular Window Painting Sponsored 2013. Thank you.
Okay, now for the reason we're here tonight, the window painting contest. Long-standing tradition in the borough, a win-win for everyone involved, a learning experience for the kids, not to mention a day out of the classroom, and as I said, it was gorgeous last week. And it also brings a touch of that Halloween magic to our town, and we really, we really enjoy having you out there and, and seeing this all come to life. So if you have, anyone has an opportunity, you haven't been down there yet, please take a stroll in the streets, they're really, the pictures are phenomenal. This year, the judges, and I know we say this every year, had a really tough time. They really, really struggled this year because there were so many great, great pictures. So, without further ado, third-place winner, who painted a vampire on the window at Melon Farms on South Street, Kimberly Russo from Freel Township, if you'd like to come forward. Our teachers, Max Boyle and Marissa Alvarado, are they here?
I'm, I'm next.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Thank you so much.
Is that Marissa? Marissa?
Oh, please.
So, you could share with Marissa that, I didn't realize you were here, I'm sorry. Thank you, and thank Kimberly. And second-place winner is artist Pasquale Dorsey and John Diana. They painted a garbor on Elmason Window on West Main Street, and their teachers, Rob and Vici, and Stephanie Kurt. Are they here? Okay, John, can we, you'll take your certificate maybe?
Hi, thank you.
And third, first place, again, Freel Township, artist Alana Lance and Maria Boginsky. Who painted this gorgeous clown. And again, teachers Max Boyle and Marissa Alvarado. Thank you all for all your hard work. We look forward to seeing you next year. Thank you for inviting us again, and we look forward to partnering with you again next year. Thank you very much.
I understand my husband and tax can't be in Atlantic City by eleven-thirty, eleven o'clock. If I leave at nine-thirty, you can get in by eleven o'clock.
See, to me, I'm still sleeping in there.
What?
Me, and I'm still sleeping.
Yeah, well, me too, because I get up to drive them at five o'clock, five-thirty.
You want, if you pay a lot of money, you're getting a haircut.
We took a walk in the woodwork and just find Bob shot. Maybe I'll get a throat.
Takes him a half a second to cut his hair, so, I mean, if he gets... I tried it once, we come with...
Yes.
So before I begin this, this part of the presentation on the violence and vandalism, just a, a final word on, on the Spooktacular. For folks who, um, aren't aware, it's actually an incredibly academic and community-oriented endeavor. Our students have to design what goes up on that window over the course of weeks. They have to submit that, they have to continually refine that within their art classes, uh, and then they're selected to participate, and then within the scope from whether it's eight to one or nine to two, all of that gets done on the window. So they have to be highly organized, highly regimented, uh, and if you wanna talk about the perfect, real-world application of a skill, uh, that's it. And, um, the vibe and the feeling, uh, in the community on that day is just absolutely terrific. You know, folks come out of the shops, community members passerby, stop and have conversation, and you can just walk the Main Street and talk to some of our fantastic students and staff who are working together on that, and to see two or three kids, uh, create works of art like that in a matter of hours is just, it would, it, if you have a couple hours next year, go watch the process and, and see how it moves. I am presenting briefly this evening, and then I'm going to, um, turn it over to Mrs. Sharp, uh, on our Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse Report. This is a report that the Superintendent of Schools is, uh, or designee, is required to give two times a year, and the data that I'm presenting on is our Phase Two data, so that's basically January one of two thousand thirteen through June thirtieth of two thousand thirteen. So I have to present twice a year, uh, on Phase One and Phase Two. And all told, um, it's a positive story. I've, I've stood up here, uh, and you're gonna hear from folks, uh, about our many programs in a few moments, and you're gonna hear more importantly from some of our students about their work in our schools. And I've stood up here, uh, for three years now and talked about the fact that we know that we have six high schools. We know that we have, uh, you know, close to twelve thousand student, high school-age students, uh, and we do not stick our hands, uh, stick our heads in the sand that we don't have any issues that any high school in America would have, whether it's with drugs, alcohol, substance abuse, students in need. We understand that as part of the comprehensive high school and as part of public education, our responsibility is to meet a diverse range of student needs, uh, and we try to do that, and I think we do it very, very well here at Freel Regional High School District. And if you look out, uh, outside of this report, district-wide, we have a three-year downward trend overall in discipline referrals, period, which I think is a positive story. So, um, in an, in an age where the awareness around discipline is heightened, uh, and folks are very careful to make sure, uh, for a variety of reasons, whether it's the HIB legislation, whether it's legal, uh, changes, whether it's state mandates, uh, you know, to be very, very cognizant of what's happening in our buildings, in, in the midst of all that, we're in a three-year downward trend, which is, which is a positive story in the school district. So, um, if you look at the, uh, unduplicated total events, that, that means, um, number of students, okay, involved in, in, in an event, we are actually down thirteen incidents from two thousand twelve to two thousand eleven, uh, and these are categorized, you can, everyone can read Violence, Vandalism, Weapons, and Substance Abuse, HIB, uh, and then the unduplicated total. Weapons, uh, a weapon can be anything. In this case, in our district, over the, over that six-month period, there were four knives and a pair of brass knuckles, which I thought disappeared in nineteen seventy-two, but apparently did not. They were found on someone's persona, whether it was a backpack or, or something, not, not in any act or, or anything like that, and in a couple of the cases, it was, um, uh, I'm not even sure that the, the students were aware that they were on their persona. But you can see, um, we did have a slight uptick in the number of HIBs. Uh, our substance abuse was down by seventeen incidents, um, from eleven-twelve to twelve-thirteen. Uh, these are the categories of violence, and again, uh, a slight, uh, very, very slight downward tick here. All told, uh, you're relatively consistent over the past year. And then these are some of the specific categorizations of vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse, and you can see those numbers for yourself. You know, in particular, as, as far as substance abuse goes, uh, one of the, um, downward trends in possession is, is a good story, under the influences down. But again, we know, we have, we have eleven thousand six hundred fourteen to eighteen-year-olds in our district. We know that incidents are gonna occur. We know that, uh, students are going to, uh, sometimes make poor decisions, and we look at, uh, our responsibility as much as possible is to help enable those students to make the more positive decision in that moment. Uh, and if they've made a poor decision, then to support them and to help them to find their path to being successful. These are the types of illegal substances, uh, that were found on students over the course of that six-month period. You know, marijuana still remains the, uh, drug of choice. We have the, and you'll hear about it, um, more from Mrs. Sharp, uh, we do have the acting county prosecutor scheduled to come out to the school district on December second to talk about, um, the growing, uh, concern over heroin in Monmouth and Ocean Counties in particular, uh, and that's, that's not a concern of, of, with just school-age children, that's a concern in general, a societal concern. And then if you wanna scroll through the charts, Mrs. Sharp, these are just, uh, monthly comparisons, uh, month by month, uh, from the two years, so you can get an idea about, you know, when, when some of your peak issues tend to happen. Honestly, April is always a very busy month. It's usually right before spring break. It's usually after an extended period of time where students haven't been, uh, out of school, and, and ten, things tend to happen in late March, early April. Anyone who's worked in schools, I think, can attest that that is, uh, one of the more, uh, busy times in, in the public schools. And usually, I do go through, um, a number of our preventative programs, uh, and we felt in, in, in honor of Violence and Prevention Week that, um, it was probably better, uh, to hear it from some of the folks themselves rather than me to stand up here and talk about it, so I'm gonna turn the program over to Mrs. Sharp. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members, uh, members of the administration, and, uh, the greater Freehold Regional Community. We wanted to take time to speak with you this evening as a follow-up to the Superintendent's semi-annual Violence and Vandalism and Substance Abuse Report. I'm really fortunate to work side by side each day with dedicated members of our professional staff, from the administration to guidance counselors, to child study team members, and also to members of our Student Assistance Coordinator Team. This fine team exerts a tremendous effort to minimize the impact and ameliorate the effects of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, bullying, drug involvement, and emotional crises that are faced by students and families of the Freehold Regional High School District community. We felt that it would be an appropriate complement to the Superintendent's message that you have just heard, to have a presentation this evening featuring some of the Student Assistance Coordinators and some of our most actively-involved students, who can add a personal dimension and perspective to all of the efforts and initiatives that are occurring in our schools during and after the school day and all year long. The SACs are very active in October, of course, helping with the Week of Respect from October seventh to the eleventh this year, which focused on bullying and all of that interventions that go along with preventing it and dealing with it. And this week, of course, which we are in right now, which is School Violence Awareness Week. Their efforts transcend any one week in the school year. Here this evening, and joining me now from our Student Assistance Staff, are Ms. Ronnie Clerico-Natal from Manalupin High School, Mr. Kevin Flynn from Marlboro High School, and Ms. Camille Musari from Howell High School. Come on up. And I would now like, now like to ask Ms. Camille Musari to speak to the board regarding those initiatives and year-round events in the schools.
I'm a little short, so I have to go down. I'd just like to talk to you about the Student Assistance Program in the district. Uh, the Student Assistance Program in the district assists student personnel in identifying students who may be experiencing personal, school, or family issues. It has a broad-based approach regardless if it involves drugs. A key to this advantage of this approach is that it allows a student to come down to the SAC's office and not get labeled, okay? In effort, it allows the SAC to reach out to more students who are at risk. There is no typical day in a SAC. We are bombarded with a array of issues, okay? And those issues can include depression, suicide ideations, self-harm, anxiety, grief, and substance abuse, so just a few. The primary goal of Student Assistance is to help students overcome these barriers in order for them to achieve, remain in school, and advance. This is all done with a partnership of the school, home, and the community. In a few moments, you will hear from our students about all the things that we do all year long, all the activities and all the programs. In this district, we are very fortunate to have six dedicated Student Assistance Counselors that work together as a team to promote the safety and well-being of our students. The Student Assistance Office is a safe haven for our students, and I'd like to thank the board for having us tonight. Thank you. I'd like to introduce my students from Howell High School, Alex Seberger, Sarah Brown, Kayla Garcia, and Sydney Wertz.
In the district, one of the programs we offer is the Teen Driving Summit, and here we introduce our students, our new drivers, to, um, the responsibility they have behind the wheel. We, um, we invite the community to the school, and we have police officers and parents and family come together to, um, to witness the, uh, responsibility, I'm sorry, that, um, these new drivers should be aware of. We talk about everything from distracted driving to drunk driving, and it's really awesome because the whole community gets involved, and you can truly see how moved everybody is after the assembly. Yeah, it's awesome.
Okay, so we had earlier this month our Week of Respect, and its variety activities that, um, we do during that week. One of the things we do is Unity Day, where the schools choose a color, and the students of that school wear that color, and it unifies the whole school against anti-bullying. And also that day, we have a banner where a student signs a pledge against anti-bullying. We got a lot of students this year, I'm really happy about that. We also have the Quentin Aaron Foundation that came. Quentin Aaron is the actor from The Blind Side, and he came to talk about his foundation against anti-bullying. Um, he also held a parent program at night, which helped many parents gain insight and services that they can help their, like, children with programs for anti-bullying. Um, this week, we have our Anti-Violence Week, and we have guest speakers and activities throughout the whole week. We also did a food bank, and Howell High School raised fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-four pounds of food for the Monmouth County community, and we're hoping this year we can raise some more.
So each year, our, um, district is able to organize a candlelight vigil. So each year, what we do is we have, um, a couple of our schools come together, and we have students and the community come together. We have students who are dressed in all black, who paint their faces in white to symbolize people who have died in drunk-driving accidents. We wear, um, signs on our bodies to show how we have passed away. It's actually a really big thing for our community, where we're able to reach out and actually talk about the dangers of drunk driving and how it influences our community and not just our family. Once everything's pretty much done, like, no one's left to the dry eye, and it's really emotional.
We have something very unique to Howell High School, and it's the Heroes and Cool Kids Program. Um, it's an organization, it's an organization based out of New Jersey. It's ran throughout the year from November to May. Um, in the program, we're trained by current or former professional athletes. The athletes train us to mentor middle-school, um, students on sportsmanship, positive lifestyle choices, um, drugs and alcohol. The program is successful because the middle-school students look up to us as their role models, and, um, majority of the community gets involved also, and we are sponsored by the Howell Menusable Alliance.
Now, I'd like to introduce, uh, Mrs. Ronnie Clerico-Natal from Manalupin.
One of the giant perks of being a SAC is being, uh, the advisor to SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions. SAD is one of the country's premier peer-to-peer youth education and prevention organizations. SAD recognizes the societal pressure that's put on today's young people to experiment with substances and engage in other unhealthy behaviors, in that the aim of SAD is to educate, support, and empower kids. They encourage adolescents to have fun, enjoy life, and nurture positive, personal relationships. They promote healthy, attractive alternatives to high-risk activities. Along with Mrs. Judy Cologne, who is a teacher at Manalupin and my co-advisor for SAD, I had the pleasure of chaperoning six terrific young ladies to the SAD National Conference in June. These girls were exemplary representatives of the Freehold Regional District. You would have all been very proud of them. Unfortunately, between illness and homework tonight, um, we are missing quite a few of them. We're missing Lee Garcia from Manalupin, Jessica Weber, my little freshman who was a superstar among all the older kids, um, Francesca Denby, and Jackie Lynch from Freehold Borough. Jackie Lynch, I, I can't say enough about her. She showed us her Freehold spirit when she was chosen out of all four hundred attendees as having the best sad-itude for her enthusiasm and her friendliness to everyone. Another very impressive student, also from Freehold Borough, is the SAD State Representative. Her name is Catherine Filet, and she represents the state of New Jersey on the National Student Leadership Council. But I'd like to bring up the two... But I'd like to bring up the two girls who were able to come tonight, my Manalupin SAD Executive Board members, Melanie Cotton and Danielle Builder.
Hi, I'm Melanie Cotton, and this is Danielle Builder, and like Ms. Natal said, we're senior executive board members of SAD. The SAD National Conference we attended this past June was an absolutely amazing experience. We spent five days in Orlando, Florida, and had the opportunity to meet and network with students from high schools all over the country. We learned about their many events and activities, we shared ideas, and we made some great friends that we'll definitely stay connected with throughout the school year. Each day at conference, we heard nationally-known motivational speakers relate their stories of personal hardship, overcoming the odds, courage, resiliency, and respect. They conveyed their powerful messages eloquently. They made us laugh and sometimes cry, but we always left feeling inspired.
There were workshops on so many topics, from fundraising ideas to leadership skills, substance awareness, to safe-driving initiatives. We planned our day so that we can all attend different workshops, so we can come back together and share information and ideas. This time last year, I wouldn't have been able to come up in front of everyone and talk, I would have been a nervous wreck, but still am, but that's okay. But this conference really, like, gave me a sense of empowerment and makes me really want to spread awareness, not to the underclassmen, but to everyone. It really was an amazing experience. We came away from this experience with a sense of empowerment and belief that we can make a difference in this world.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Flynn from Marlboro High School.
Thank you. Good evening. We were fortunate enough at Marlboro to go to the 2012 conference in Torrance, California. I would like to bring up my four members that I've brought with me tonight of our SAD Steering Committee, Jamie Kleiner, Alara Gerler, Sammy Gallo, Jenna Gallo, and Sammy Drake, I always get them mixed up. At Marlboro High School this year, we have a lot of exciting things going on. We have the 20th Annual Candlelight Vigil, which Jamie will expound on a little bit. Today, we were, because we were one of those 55 champion schools with the Brain Injury Alliance, we were able to set up and got to see in action the new driving simulator, which was awarded to us and, I think, four other schools, and the kids are really excited about that. And rather than me tell it to you, I've asked the students to come up and give you a little summary as to what we have going on at Marlboro.
I still gotta lower this mic. Okay, as Mr. Flynn said, hello, my name is Jamie Kleiner. I'd like to introduce you to the rest of the SAD Executive Team.
Hi, I'm Jenna.
And behalf of SAD, I would like to thank the Board of Education for having us tonight. So as Mr. Flynn went into a little bit, this is a very special year for Marlboro High School SAD, because this is the 20th Annual Candlelight Vigil for Marlboro High School. And for those of you that have been fortunate enough to attend our Candlelight Vigil, it is something that has been the pride and joy of Marlboro Township for three years since before I was even born, to give you a little bit of an idea. And we have a lot planned this year for the 20th Annual. We have started, we have hit the ground running this year. We actually have restructured the way we organize our club by dividing into committees. So rather than just having one mass club this year, we have three different committees. We have the fundraising committee, we have the Candlelight Vigil Committee, because it's that important, and we also have the publicity committee. So I'd like to give the committee leaders a little bit of an opportunity to tell you what each committee does.
Hello, everyone. Something that goes hand-in-hand with the Candlelight Vigil is definitely Ex-Out Day. SAD members actually write their own obituaries, which are posted on their lockers. Personally, writing my obituary my sophomore year was just so strange, because I would never, like, picture myself in that kind of position. But during the day, the school day, prior to the vigil, a grim reaper actually goes into the classrooms and pretends to kill SAD members, and the SAD members actually symbolize the deaths of those killed by drunk or impaired drivers. And freshmen are actually really affected by this and are actually really afraid because they don't know what's really going on, and sometimes, like, my sophomore year, some people texted my sister asking if I was alive, like, that's how serious they thought it was. But it really just affects and impacts the absences of people around you, no matter the cost.
Hi, I'm Sammy. I'm the leader of the fundraising committee for our SAD Marlboro chapter. We really just focus on making money, which is what we really need to get things done and promote our club. We really want to start doing more bake sales in the morning during school. We have a half an hour, and we really want to just start making bake sales, get some money out there. Another thing is, we're going to be selling SAD shirts and bracelets and keychains, trying to promote our message at the Candlelight Vigil, and also hopefully during the morning of Ex-Out Day, which is the same day as Candlelight Vigil. One of the big things that we're really looking to do is a lifesaver count, which is, we get a huge jar of lifesavers, and in the lifesaver, the number of lifesavers inside the jar represent the people who have died from drunk drivers, and you raffle how many, like, you see how many you think that are in the jar, and then we, at the end of the week, we would tell the people, like, oh, this is the number of people who have died in a drunk driver accident, so it's really influential. So Jenna?
Hi, so I'm the leader of the publicity committee, and currently, right now, in the publicity committee, we are making a slogan for a billboard that's going to be put on Route 79, and this slogan's theme is also going to correspond with the theme of Candlelight Vigil. The theme of Candlelight Vigil this year is going to be all about how it's the 20th anniversary, and how we are the only high school that has had 20 consecutive successful Candlelight Vigils. And for us, that's an amazing achievement, and we just want to spread the word about how this has affected everyone.
So now that we've given you a little bit of an idea of how our club operates, I'd like to tell you, I'd like to give you a little bit of a history of what SAD has done last year, and my experience on the executive board, and what we plan to do this year, because this year is definitely a very exciting year coming up. So last year, we started off the year with a very big membership recruitment. We actually, last year, had about 80 members in the beginning of the year, and after this recruitment, we almost tripled our membership to about 180 members. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of how big SAD has really gotten throughout Marlboro High School. With our newfound, very enthusiastic membership, we started off the year with the middle-school outreach, where we taught middle schools about the dangers of bullying, the different forms of bullying, and we're always welcomed at the middle schools with open arms. They love how we interact with the middle schoolers, and they look up to us, so that's always very nice. This year, we're also going to do a middle-school outreach, but the difference is, we're going to focus more on substance abuse and drunk driving in order to correlate with our 20th anniversary of the Candlelight Vigil. And at the end of the year last year, we finished off the year very strongly by participating in the You Got Brains, I guess, it was a competition. And like Mr. Flynn said, we were one of four schools in the district to take home a driving simulator, which they're setting up currently in the school. I saw them doing it this morning, and I have not had the opportunity to see it yet, but I will get my hands on that eventually, because I'm very excited to see it. So this year coming up, we have, again, the 20th Annual Candlelight Vigil, and like I said, it's the pride and joy of Marlboro Township, especially because we're very proud of starting the tradition of the Candlelight Vigil throughout the FRHSD community. We have also divided into committees, and we also plan on doing the cross-age outreach. We definitely have a very, very large membership this year. We've had a couple of meetings, and it's all focused on the Candlelight Vigil, and all the kids are very excited. We're planning Ex-Out Day. We plan on getting new Candlelight Vigil shirts that say 20th Anniversary on it. And for those of you that have not had the opportunity to see the Candlelight Vigil, I really suggest you try to make it out, because it's a very, very impactful night. We have a lot of great speakers. There's not a dry eye in the room. We have a lot of presentations, and it's just really a very emotional night. I've been going to it since my brother was in high school and I was, you know, a little middle-schooler, so it's also something that's very personal to me. And make sure to please check your mailboxes, because you will be receiving invitations to our Candlelight Vigil next week, and it's on it, it's going to say Marlboro High School is known for the only high school, the only high school in New Jersey, for having 20 consecutive years of a Candlelight Vigil. So that's something we're very, very proud of, and thank you for your time.
Okay, so now to try to follow after such an impressive display from our young folks, a thank you to everyone who came out, let's give them a round of applause. And I just would like to give the Board of Education an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have of any of our SACS who are here, or any of the students, or myself, if you have any follow-up questions from the presentation.
Ashley, if I may?
Of course, Carl.
I don't know, of course, I think everybody gets nervous when I start to talk. I certainly don't get nervous, and I heard one of the speakers say how she was nervous, but I could tell you that listening to you makes me extremely proud of sitting on the Board and seeing how the torch is being turned over to the young people, and you guys are as articulate as anybody out there. You know, you listen to your teachers every day, and they have a lot of experience, they're professionals at what they do, they're good talkers. I've been making a career out of talking my whole life, I don't know how I pulled this off, but I tell you, I wouldn't want to go toe-to-toe with any of you and just keep doing what you're doing. The work that you guys are doing is so very, very important, and any parent like myself that sits here and listens knows how valuable your mission is, and I just want to say thank you so much for your work, and thank you for your presentation.
And I just...
I just wanted to not only thank the student presenters, but I wanted to thank the SACS. I personally know how hard they work, working alongside some of them for a long time, how much they care, and what a great opportunity it is for the students of today to have somebody like that in the building. I know that when I first started teaching, we didn't have that, and I just, I can't thank them enough for what they do. They go above and beyond what they're asked to do, and I know how important they are to the students, and I've been to the Marlboro Candlelight Ceremony, and I recommend it to anybody, but if you have not gone, please go.
Okay, and in closing, I just want to add, the Marlboro Candlelight Vigil is going to be December 4th, and what time is that?
6:30.
6:30, okay. The location?
Marlboro.
Marlboro High School, okay, very good. The auditorium. And we also have another event, actually, the first week of December, that as we wrap it up this evening, I want to make sure that the Board is aware and the community is aware. We are going to have an acting, an evening with the acting Monmouth County Prosecutor on December 2nd at 7:00 PM at Manalupin High School's auditorium, and that evening is very important. We're going to discuss topics related to substance abuse trends across the county. We're going to provide information about our prevention and intervention programs. We actually have put together, all six SACS and myself, we have dabbled in movie-making. We have a special treat to come out that evening. It's a treat, and we're thinking it's pretty special. And we do also have a keynote speaker lined up, who is the president of Steered Straight, who has actually come out to many of our schools to work with our students. We have him this evening, that evening, he's dedicating his time to us free of charge. And we invite the Board, as the administration, and frankly, the entire community, to join us that evening. Again, that's Monday, December 2nd, 7:00 PM, Manalupin High School's auditorium, and we hope to pack the house. And as you leave this evening, we have some flyers with all of that information for you. And again, to the Board, I thank you for this opportunity, and I applaud my SACS and my students.
We did, the district had the Marching Band Festival last weekend, which, if you're not familiar with that event, it's all six high-school marching bands come together once a year. We rotate which high school hosts it, and each band performs a small set, and while the bands come out on the field, and while one exits and one enters, a band in the stands is assigned to play music as that occurs. It's a terrific evening, and it's not, there's no competition to it, it's really students just sharing their love of music and sharing an opportunity to sort of perform in front of one another, which they don't have very, very often, if at all, and it's just a terrific event. It's something that the school district does, and I think something that also just sets us apart in some of the things that we're able to do here. We did have our International Baccalaureate Consultation Visit on October 10th and 11th. We had a gentleman who's our assigned advisor from Houston, Texas, come out and spend a couple of days in our district. That visit is really an initial conversation with the district leadership, building administration about the vision, the thoughts around the International Baccalaureate program. The visit went very, very well. That's sort of the easy visit, the easy conversations. The next visit, when the folks come out to really judge our capacity to do the program, is certainly the more strenuous, for lack of a better term, visit. However, I think that the gentleman was duly impressed with our school district, and with our vision, and with our capacity to host a program like that. Also had the, all of the local police chiefs here last week. We went through the memorandum of understanding, but we also just had some general conversation around school security. It was a joint meeting with the building principals and the police chiefs, which we have once a year, and it's a nice opportunity for us to get together as a regional, because sometimes things are a little bit different from one municipality to another in terms of how things may or may not be interpreted. And some good conversation there, and some follow-ups that will be taking place, but a nice opportunity to share best practices, and as a matter of fact, the chief's organization is hosting a training session, I believe later this month or early November, at the Breakers, that representatives from each of our high schools will be attending. We also had a form something new this year. It's an executive student cabinet, and what I asked each building principal to do was to recommend one student from each building to me, so that I could meet with those folks at a regular basis with Dr. Hazel, and go through some ideas that we have within the schools, but also to really spend some quality time with some students who have some rich perspective on what is occurring in the schools, and thoughts on how to continually improve programs and practice and as such. We had our first meeting on Friday afternoon, and you'll be seeing more of these students as I'll be asking them to come and speak at some of our board meetings. But just to go through the six individuals that are on the committee for this year, Christopher Durso, who's here in the audience, Chris, Kevin Gilboy from Freell High School, Carol O'Brien from Freell Township High School, Michelle Galino from Howell High School, Hallie Propper from Manalupin High School, and Marshall Kramsky from Marlboro High School. Terrific kids, terrific conversation. We were trying to keep the initial meeting to an hour, because it was a Friday afternoon, and we didn't want to impede on the student time, and we ended up going for about an hour and 45 minutes, and probably could have went for three hours more. So I'm looking forward to working with those students. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, we are on a, we are on a three-year downward trend with discipline referrals in the school district to complement those numbers of a slight downward trend in the violence and vandalism, and I think that that is a testament to the work of the folks that you saw tonight, as well as a whole host of other folks throughout the school district to make that happen. You know, the school district right now is humming on all cylinders. It's been a very smooth school opening, knock on wood. It's been a very smooth school opening, knock on wood, and things are going very well. We've, we had some phenomenal training in here today with, as you know, and I've mentioned, with the new teacher evaluation system, with the mandates around the Common Core and the such, we're trying to make sure that we find a way, as a school district, to integrate those mandates into what we are doing and to move forward in a really meaningful manner for our school district to own those mandates. And we have a group of PLC facilitators, induction specialists, which are mentor coordinators, basically, as well as our school improvement panels, which are mandated by the state, which, you know, I'm throwing out a lot of acronyms that people are probably like, well, what is he saying? What those groups are charged with is really helping to pave the pathway for the rest of the faculty and staff in the school district to make sense of these mandates. And the only way to do that is to get those individuals from the school district in their room together regularly to collaborate, to plan. And we've partnered with a group called the Center for Supportive Schools, who were here today with, all six teams from all six high schools spent the full day mapping out what we're going to do in a full day of professional development on November 11th, district-wide, and finalizing some of the things that we're doing October 24th and a half day, professional development. And again, the crux of what we're trying to do is to make sure that what's important to our school district doesn't get lost in the wash of all the mandates, and that we move forward in the way that we want to move forward as a school district, not that is dictated to us. I'm done.
Next, we have a board report. Curriculum committee?
Yes. So we had a late-night meeting after our last meeting, where we talked in detail about the next three years of our IB plan. As Mr. Sampson noted, we had a site visit from our IB advisor. We talked about how it's going to be important to do outreach early to kids, to students who are in the K-8s, because this is going to be implemented in a couple of years, and we're going to have to look to a little bit younger age group than we're used to presenting to. And then we talked in general how we should be encouraging our learning centers and academies to continue and expand whatever outreach they are doing through the K-8s school system, so that students are getting earlier exposure to what our high school programs have to offer.
Okay, next we have Mr. Boyce.
Yes. Prior to opening up for public comment and vote on the agenda, I just wanted to make note that there are some addendum. They're included on the back table for H1, H2, also I5, and L4. But I also wanted to speak to an item on tonight's agenda regarding a report from OFAC, and just some of the background and results of that review. OFAC is the Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance. It's part of the Department of Education. It comes under Administration and Finance. And they reached out to the district in early August, because they needed to do a follow-up on the Office of the State Comptroller's Report that was issued on June 25th, so a little more than a month prior to that. So they came out, they spent some time with us to look at, you know, the Comptroller's Report and some of the things that had been done, although not much time had passed. And they issued a report at the end of September, and it's something that we're required to discuss at a public meeting. One of the byproducts of that report is a corrective action plan, and that's to address any recommendations that come out of the review of legal expenses from OFAC. Although there was nothing clearly identified as a recommendation, there is a section of the report that speaks to conclusions of their review. So we took, we took some of the language in there, and we created the corrective action plan accordingly, and we'll submit that down to the Department of Education for their review. But there are four areas that they talked about. The first, and these are things that also were discussed in the report prior from the State Comptroller's Office, the resolutions for legal services award needed to have additional language with regard to the supporting reasons for why the professional services, that particular contractor was awarded a professional service contract. This was something that was in the Comptroller's Report. We haven't made any such resolutions since then, and certainly our method of implementation is to certainly comply with that as clearly as we can. Another area was public notices, awarding any professional service contracts needs to have certain elements. And so here's the spirit of the statute on this. The statute would like schools, in this particular reference, when they award a professional service contract, to advertise that in the newspaper and notify the public of the nature, the extent, and the annual contract cost. And we had a lengthy discussion with the folks from OFAC as to what exactly that should look like. And if you look around the state and what some school districts do, there's some different interpretation on how to quantify the annual cost of a contract that's not definitive in terms of amounts. For legal services, for example, doing that prior to the year happening, it's, the district cannot ascertain exactly what measures will be brought against the district during the course of the ensuing year, and therefore what the total cost of the contract is. So it's an hourly rate. And some districts put the hourly rate, some districts put the total appropriation, which may or may not be accurate. Some put, please see the contract on file in the board office. So we're going to reach out to DOE and ask for some clarification on, in this situation, when the annual amount is not defined, how would they like us to proceed? So that's our method of implementation in that area. Also, contracts for legal services identify hourly rates for professional support staff and other details related to the rates of reimbursement. We already have that, those details in place in our current legal contract, so we'll be submitting that along with our corrective action plan. And finally, legal services invoices, including sufficient detail in accordance with the applicable statute, which we've worked with our Mr. Toscano of Comegna Law Group to devise a different way of reporting out on legal matters and the invoice that does that for us. Interestingly, also in the conclusion area, OFAC confirms, and I'll just read from the report, confirms the following district improvements to the process of acquiring legal services. They have three items, the use of improved billing invoice descriptions to eliminate non-descriptive and block billing invoices. Second is closely monitoring the total cost for legal service to ensure costs do not exceed the agreed budgeted funds without submission to an approval by the board. And finally, the current law firm does not charge an administrative fee based on percentage of total amount billed by attorneys, as was the practice with the former firm. So remember, OFAC came out just to follow up on some of those things that appeared in the Comptroller's Report. So we're required to discuss that and approve the plan, and that's on the agenda for this evening. Any questions from the board? I know that there's been a good deal of correspondence from us to you with a lot of the backup information, but if there are any questions, be happy to answer those now.
Sean, if I could, I don't have a question, but I just want to add some clarification or some information to what you said. It's important to note that this board, by unanimous resolution, called the Office of the State Comptroller out to see if we can improve our abilities and methods. So this wasn't like they came out to monitor us. It was the initiative of this board to look for better ways of doing things. And I don't know if I should, you know, go on with my personal background on this, but I could tell you this. I've conducted numerous, and led numerous federal monitorings of municipal agencies, and all of the findings were, in fact, minor, in my opinion, and subject very much to interpretation. And I see at this point absolutely no defect in the way that the management is proceeding in the procurement and the managing of the billing or anything else from a professional standpoint. I could say that, and if I were in my old job, I certainly would clear all of those things unequivocally. So thank you, Sean.
Mr. Meszis?
Just, I don't have a question, just one other thing that I forgot to include in my report, is that tomorrow morning, we will be in Atlantic City, and at noon, although it was late last year, we are going to be receiving the New Jersey School Board's Distinguished Program Award. So we're looking forward to that, and representing the school district and accepting that award for the combination program between the culinary program of Freeland High School and the animal botanical science program at Freeland Township and Wegmans Food Stores. So another honor for the school district.
Okay, next up, we have public participation. Nobody signed up. Was there anyone who wanted to speak? Fantastic. Fantastic. Okay. Next, we have the agenda. I'd like to take the agenda in one shot. That would be H1 to L3. Don't forget about the addendums for H1, H2, I5, L4.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion? Say, none? Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Ms. Tamasik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Old business? New business? No business. Motion, motion, motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Thank you for making up.